Uh. This is the October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two committee of the whole meeting. I'll start by reading our land acknowledgement. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges us located on the first people's traditional lands. Recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we have pulled our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties of all the first peoples and nations that call this place home. Town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community from these sacred lands for generations to come. Uh, call the meeting to order. First is the adoption of the agenda. Um, so anybody have any changes or additions to the agenda? Hey.
Sir, if I could, administration has nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, do I need a motion to accept the agenda? Yes, thank you.
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Hey, all in favor? All opposed? Uh, next is citizens minute with council.
The only one.
Oh, yes.
Come with the table. So we can catch you on camera.
And.
I didn't do that sitting here last time. You're okay? Hey, uh, I'm here in Southend regarding Hinton Valley Shopping Center. How came in safety issues? The location surrounding my shop, King Drug, and all the other businesses in the Valley Shopping Center continue to experience pedestrian safety, traffic control issues. I met with administration onsite this summer, pointing out some of the concerns. I had a follow-up conversation with Winston, and from that, we did an onsite assessment. Following the onsite assessment, I do believe that council will expect administration bringing this board for the two thousand twenty-three budgets. Uh, cap- capital budget. Council, I'm asking if maybe some of you guys can come down and spend some time in the shopping center and see some of the safety concerns we have down there. You know, we've got an ever-growing Evergreen Foundation. Um, somebody's gonna get killed down there. You know, it's getting really bad. People speeding, going the wrong way. Now, it's just something that hopefully you guys can address. That's it.
Thank you. Do anybody have any questions? Uh, please.
Bill, are you okay if we just, if we're interested in following up and making some arrangements to come down and visit you then?
Absolutely.
Okay, yep, for sure.
Sounds like administration has some, uh, some follow-up to this.
Well, I think came down, Winston came down. Awesome job. Came down there and we walked around the shopping center, showed him some of the concerns that we had. He had a whole bunch of really great ideas. He said that he'd be bringing them forth to you guys to possibly put forth in the budget next year. Like, it's, you know, we've got a lot of pedestrian traffics down there, a lot of walk, the people walking around. New medical centers being built and everything, and there's people driving the wrong way. Excessive speeding down there is getting really bad. You know, and, you know, we were looking at possible speed bumps or, you know, and Winston came up with a whole bunch of really great ideas.
Good. We look forward to seeing those. And, and a last chance for any comments, like questions? Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Uh, next on the meeting, an agenda, delegations, presentations. We have the town economic recovery grant program. Nancy. This is Nancy Robbins from, uh, Community Futures West Yellowhead, for those that don't know.
Thank you, Jen.
Please go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nancy Robbins. I'm the general manager of Community Futures West Yellowhead. Um, before again, I, I do want to say, uh, thank you to C A O Hanlon. It's been a pleasure to work with him over the last eighteen months, and we'll miss him back in the future. So, thank you. Um, I'm here today to update council on the town of Hinton economic recovery grant. As you are aware, Community Futures West Shell Head administered this grant on behalf of the town of Hinton. Uh, these grant proposals that were submitted were requested to be between one thousand and five thousand dollars. Format was same as the community grant, um, offering by the town of Hinton with the following exceptions. We did add some eligibility for ad hoc business groups such as the Green Square Networking Group, H R E D T earner, and the Valley Business History of Shopping. I'm not sure they're really being built for giving me. Um, and I'll be within project manage the grant on that group's cap. Um, and oversee the expenses. The proposals offer were supposed to fall between one of the following categories related to pandemic recovery. Development of knowledge and our tools to diversify the local economy, labor market skills development, capacity building, and community organizations, enhance services and infrastructure, and promotion of entrepreneurship and business development. An additional assessment question was added to ensure that the project fell within pan- pandemic recovery and the strategic priorities set out by Tom Hinton. And we had a grant, uh, review committee consisting of our two representatives from the council of town of Hinton, one business representative and two staff from Community Futures West Shell Head. In all, we had four applications, um, for the committee to review, and we funded two of those. The first one was with Bridges for their facility enhancement for twenty-eight hundred dollars. Vision, Bris- Bridges have changed locations within the town of Hinton and applied for support to enhance the facility. They have recently moved into on Hardesty Avenue. This move reduces expenses and increases their programming support opportunities through a partnership with the Hinton Good Companion Society. The proposed renovations will provide work contracts for two locally owned small businesses in Hinton as well as building organizational capacity to adequately operate in a new space. The second one was the Hinton District Chamber of Commerce for a project called Business Mentorship via Podcast. And that amount was twenty-two twenty. The chamber is intending to produce bi-weekly podcasts of about thirty to sixty minutes to provide support and mentorship to new and existing entrepreneurs. The funding will be used to purchase additional microphones and headsets to allow for up to four individuals to participate in a recorded discussion at a time. In terms of what happens in the next steps, um, we will check on with these organizations for the project and make sure that the project's deliverable to our net, because everything is first. Uh, all expenses must be reimbursed by December thirty-first, January fifteenth. There will be a final report due back to Community Futures and by February fourteenth. Because you can't get an acme, I'll come on Valentine's Day and update you on the progress of these two projects. Thank you for this opportunity to give nonprofits in Hinton a chance to recover from pandemic. And as always, it's a pleasure to partner with you, um, and your administration on projects that work towards economic recovery.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions or comments, please? No questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Well, that was easy. Thank you.
Uh, we now have civic partnership presentation forming art society of Hinton. Please.
Jen, they can answer, but we're fine, guys. Yeah, we're loud enough. It's fine. Everyone.
I want to keep the numbers. It says one, but it's, it's all. That's okay. I did look at the numbers.
Hey, could you introduce yourself in your group? We have some new, new people that might not know who you are, please. And then go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, council and town administration. Uh, I will introduce right away. Thank you for the opportunity to present, um, our appropriation request in person. I'm Denise, we tend to treasure of home for fine arts society, Hinton. Over here, Deb Workin is the president of our, uh, society, and Wendy Lorella in the dark is our facility manager and coordinator for all that happens inside the building. Together with a handful of terrific board members and some very key tech volunteers who keep the performing arts theater in Hinton operating. We're also known in the community as the path. I was in the West Baysor Guild Building. As you see on, uh, let's see, do I need to do this?
Just have to click on the picture. Okay.
Okay, so we're performing arts gear. We've got a little logo. As you can see on this slide, um, we recorded our rental days in the facility. We run our calendar. You're slightly different than, um, what our appropriation ask is. So you're gonna see some of us finishing off, uh, of the September to December twenty-twenty-one. Um, we've got Brick Lake Theater that continually uses our facility, and we've got corporate events that come in, and we've got dance, some of which runs a, um, um, competitive component in the facility. Hit Movies is still in there, and they're taking over the, the Hit and Dump, uh, which is independent, like tip movies. Um, Hit School of Dance, uh, brings in their solo perform- solo performances every year. They don't run it out of the mix, and it's kind of nice with our hundred and sixty-two seat facility. It's kind of a little bit more feel-y in there. Um, Pickleball, we had last year, um, helped out. Um, the town against it actually did have them have a spot. They're going to go next year to, um, the schools, but we might have them back during the daytime, just for a couple time slots, just so they can play daytime games. Um, we've got some programming that we started doing, having bring some comedians in and some live, uh, performances a little bit more. We've also got Spirit Rockies and, uh, males chorus that perform their concerts in our facility. Uh, the Changan has a couple that they, with S C S S N, it's when they hit, they use our facility. It's a good size um, for medium, and we've got some traveling events that have come through, and, um, some have had to be canceled because of COVID and just now people just aren't always ready. Um, also video game parties we had and regional arts festival, the Yellowhead Group, they're still, um, active and using the facility occasionally. So it looks like we could probably have like three hundred and twenty days of usage in a timeframe, but again, sometimes there's things happening like, uh, two things on one day, right? So we're not, we're not everyday active in the facility by any means, but we try our best. For our rent revenue, that, that particular, um, I'm gonna explain it a little bit more. You guys got a good spreadsheet. Hopefully you have time to look at it, but that rent revenue is what we claim from the potters, the quilters, and art clubs that were in that facility before. The cinema revenue is, was projected as. Because the they all are also down to three days, sometimes four. They cut back their week, so it's a little lower than it has been in the past years. The projected amount, the live and private events, that's taking in the businesses that come in and, um,
but it's like the energy festival.
Yeah, the energy festival and the, um, friendships and groups that have come in with their down, in advancing and all that. They had really good, um, really good attendance at those events, too. Concession, that's, uh, with us doing a volunteer bartending and selling popcorn at whatever user group event comes along. Um, we do apply for grants, and we do get donations, and our interest, um, is on our G I C that we hold for our management revenues. So there's a little bit of a an amount there. I, we don't expect to get a grant this year. We aren't asking for one unless it's just for live performances. We aren't going to do any, um, big purchase of equipment this year. I don't know, not on our spectrum anyway. And, uh, we do bring in a little bit of advertising money when Wendy, Wendy does the pre-show ads and a little bit of equipment rental piece that we have. So again, you know, we're live performers, we're multimedia film, uh, video game, we got ballet coming in, we've got all kinds of dance. Kind of, not all kinds of dance, but some really interesting dance. And some very good commitment was this hit school and that they use us for that one time. And again, for, um, uh, Tanya's competitive component that she brings with the outside communities like White Court and all the dancers that come from out of town to compete for that three-day weekend. So it's quite nice. Again, that's just the grants that we have applied for. Some we get. Candy Culture's based grants have been really good favorable to us, so that's, I think they kind of liked our facility from day one. Because I think they've been the big donor or the big grant from initially. We brought in comedy nights. Uh, this year, we have one coming up in November. We've been able to, um, in, start up our power hour again now that we've got COVID behind us, I hope. Um, video game tournaments over the summer, had some fun, and it brings in some birthday party activity after following. We're gonna, I think Wendy, who's the, the teenagers are coming in?
Uh, maybe collaborating with the Hinton Youth Center. Um, I've been talking with the coordinator there, and perhaps we may do a thirteen plus video game tournament as well. November twentieth is for the twelve-member groups, so that should be exciting.
So there's just a couple posters for some of the events that we did have or did host this year. We can see that our expense of, uh, on that salary here, we have is kind of that eighty-five thousand, our fixed cost. Got to sign my notes here. I don't mess up. The wages that's covering the facility manager and our new casual person we plan to hire to assist Wendy on the very busy weekends that occur. Our fixed costs are those you can, um, as you can see on the spreadsheet, are like insurance, I T, legal accounting, office supplies, and advertising. Our operational costs are our concession items, products we sell in live, active, like, uh, performer fees and stuff like that. That's where that's included. And the building extensions, um, are for our sea cleaning and window washing and janitorial, and we do have a proud to say we do have a janitor this year, system, and, uh, because man, it's, and they keep that building so nice. Thanks, Trevor, for coming us. So many years, and I think I'm invited to talk. Yeah, they've been great, and we really have been appreciating them, and, uh, they're enjoyed to work with. Um, again, the equipment makes expense for the theater is fairly low. Um, we will have a little bit of maintenance on our seating, um, to, a couple of things to repair there, but we've also asked if Eva from the town will help us instead of us going to have this company way out of town like on Charity or Edmonton. We've asked that she gets one of her guys to help. We can train them a little bit because we know how to fix a couple of the things with these seedings. And we're gonna have, and Emma just thought that was a perfect way to do it, so we will be connecting with the town to do that a little bit more. So I think it'll be a win for everybody in the end. So, again, our we're looking at kind of a deficit of around, um, sixty-five thousand with our revenue and then all our expenses that we cover. So we would be asking for an appropriation amount of about sixty-five thousand for twenty-twenty-three. It'd be wonderful if we could get that so we don't have to dip into our asset management fund, um. We're thankful that we can reduce our house this year by seven thousand, and we know the crowds are beginning to increase for each and every event we hold. Some people are still very getting out with others, as you can also see it would be, no, sorry, as you can also see, it would be also, it let us put in another five thousand into our asset management fund. If you did give us the sixty-five. We realize the replacement cost and some of the items that we are, um, responsible for are ever-increasing, so we, you know, that, like, you know, that, um, I think the next slide will show that we, we kind of managed two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of equipment. I don't believe that that actually includes the piano now, as I was thinking about it today. And there is a little bit of cost that's gonna have to be sunk into the piano, just, um, this next year or the next little while. So I hope you all were able to understand the printout that I provided. I hope it was useful to you. And at this point, if you guess, if there's any questions, but I can help understand or.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Please.
I don't have a, a question. I just, again, I want to express my appreciation. This is one of those civic agency presentations I always look really forward to. It's just such a bang-up job. Uh, and I think I, I mean it. I, I think it's very hard to do what you guys do with the amount of money that you request on an ongoing basis. Um, and it, it boggles my mind that with the cost of the assets, you're, you're able to consistently come in with some very reasonable asks. At least that's my opinion on things. So thanks for the artwork.
Trevor? Yeah, I just, uh, some clarification. You said the hit movies, they're changing to another group now? Was that the?
No, hit movies is still the same, but we used, uh, Ash or Path would run the Hit Film Club, and we did that so that they can get started up that Hit Film Club, because it's tip. Now Hit Movies is gonna take that over, so they're gonna add that to their, um.
So it'll, it'll, it'll.
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll add more movie dates to, yeah, bringing in independent films. There was actually quite a good crowd that came out. So it's just a great thing for Hinton movies and everybody.
And it's not that we didn't, we could have continued doing it, but in a way, we should be just supporting and helping the user groups that come into that facility, so it, it just helps them on their goddamn dollar numbers. We did, because they struggled too. We didn't want to.
Please go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, you guys always do a great job. Happy to see that the number dropping from seventy-two to sixty-five. You guys always try to find a way. My only question, I guess, is more for future years. Are you anticipating anything from the projector, sound equipment, sound tower of major expenditures in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
We didn't have a big chunk of money that we invested into the projector this last year. I think it was around fourteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, I should know that right offhand, but I'm pretty sure that was fourteen. Um, it, it upgraded a few things now. We know that if something does go wrong with that projector, that it will cost us in that sixty-five thousand up mark. We do know that we might be able to trade it in, and it's not totally broken or obsolete. It, it would be a trade-in type thing, so I think we feel pretty confident. And then me, again, with our sound system, our sound people tell us it's, it's fine. Our lighting system is great. We do have a tiny little issue with our lighting, and that's got to do with the building when they built, the people built it and put in some kind of a computerized program up in an electrical room that hasn't been, been fixed, but that again is, um, Eva is aware of that, that is something that it's like uh, just an issue. It's not anything that's really gonna cost big money. We just have to find a solution to it. So I feel that with the, with our money that we have been able to save over the years, I feel that we would still be able to secure a small loan if we had to and be able to handle it, like I think going forward.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Any more comments, questions? Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your work.
Thanks so much. Thanks a lot.
Have a good day, everyone.
All right. That will move on to section five, reports from administration. We'll start with five-one, M B two-six-two-nine. Update properties in tax careers.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I will hand this over to, uh, our Carpet Services Director, and, uh, Mr. Bob will take us through, uh, the items that, uh, were considered, uh, during the September twenty-third, uh, tax arrears.
Good evening, committee members. Thank you, C A O Hanlon. Um, the report is here for your information that's required, um, just to bring you up to date. We did make a considerable headway on some of the properties that were in tax arrears. We still have, uh, approximately six that are not in a tax agreement and requires some additional work by administration to, uh, come to a good conclusion with them.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Uh, please go ahead.
I'd like to move that committee accepts the report for information.
Any questions or comments on that? Uh, all in favor of accepting the report for information, all of those? Okay, that's carried. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? I just have one more. Would the follow-up action be for the six that aren't, uh, that are not, uh, that are left, uh, down in there?
To the chair, to all of the committee, the, um, so we've proceeded to the point where we could take over these properties should we wish, uh, but we're looking at making sure that that's the best step forward and making sure that there's no other options, uh, being as a a rental or a unit that has lot rent. If we proceed with the action and, and taking that over, then we become responsible for that lot rent. Uh, we want to make sure that whatever steps we take are, uh, in the best interest of the town.
We wouldn't necessarily take them over though.
Through the chair and all committee, um, to, to provide an opinion on that right now, I, I think it would be erroneous. I, I would like to ensure that I've gone through and consulted with legal and made sure that we're not, and we need to look at, we don't want to be displacing families from their home prematurely. We want to be working with people as much as we can. So as always, we're looking at an acceptable tax agreement. Moving forward with stuff like that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, with that, let's move on to, uh, five point two. Uh, before we move on to five point two, could I hand the chairmanship over to somebody else? Because I may make a motion. And I'm required to not, uh, hand it over to somebody else if I make a motion. So would one of you like to take over, please?
Point of clarification, are you asking to do the motion now?
Uh, no, I would do it later in the talk.
Uh, then I would ask administration, to my knowledge, the chair just recuses himself during the motion part, and the next deputy mayor in line would take over during that motion. Is that correct?
Sir, that would be correct. Um, the chair can proceed at this time, at a time in which you may wish to make a, a motion on this item. You would, uh, ask somebody to assume the chair.
Okay, in that case, let's proceed with five-two, Adco Gas and Pipelines Limited franchise fee. Please.
Thank you, sir. Page twenty-one of the committee's agenda package. This is the Adco Gas and Pipelines Limited franchise fee, uh, as council will recall September twenty-seventh. In your information package was the October, uh, was, excuse me, the August twenty-sixth letter from Adco. And, uh, this is one, uh, is a letter that generated some interest from council at the time. I had an opportunity to follow up with Adco and do a bit of work on the Alberdi Utilities Commission website. I was able to return some information back. I was able to return some information back to council in this report. Just about halfway down the first page in as shown in attachment two to your package, Adco. To the benefit of the town of Hinton collected four hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents in franchise fees in two thousand twenty-one. That was on delivery revenues of gas of two million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. That at that time, the franchise fee was fourteen point six percent and currently the franchise fee remains at fourteen point six percent. Council at the time of the September meeting had asked for a bit of history on this. We could not find any history indicating when. We weren't collecting fourteen point six percent. So the distance back that I could go on the A U C website. The town of Hinton has always collect or excuse me, had cool on the. Behalf of the town of Hinton has always has always charged fourteen point six percent. And Jen and I had a chance to go through the agenda packages and we found nothing that had come to council in any of our recent packages. Or even longer term that indicated that council had ever changed this. So to the best of our information, it's been fourteen point six percent for some time. Attachment three provides a listing of all the communities and there are one hundred. That are franchise holders with Adco Gas. The average franchise fee is nineteen point four-two percent. The town of Hinton again is fourteen point six percent, which puts us four point eight-two percent below the average he collected. The maximum gas franchise fee, which may be collected, and that is as would have to be approved by the Alberta Utilities Commission, is thirty-five percent. There are six communities out of those that one hundred that are currently charging that maximum fee of thirty-five percent. There are three that are currently not charging a fee. And just to explain a little further, municipalities can enter into a franchise agreement with a utility provider. It does not necessarily obligate them to charge a fee. So there are three that have franchise agreements but are charging nothing under their franchise fees. There is a franchise fee calculator and I do apologize. I meant to bring my laptop. I could go get it. I got it on my desktop there. It's a pretty simple Excel spreadsheet that allows us to consider what various options could be. Top of page two in table one, and please, I do want to just to the members of the committee. I don't want to suggest administration is suggesting any change to the fee. But in table one. Felt it prudent to show. Running some numbers through that franchise fee calculator, what the changes would be. So the very first line in table one indicates, and this would be for twenty twenty-three. So we would be utilizing. In the twenty twenty-three year, Adco has estimated the sale of gas to town of Hinton. And at the fourteen point six percent franchise fee, that would that would collect five hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Now, as as a hypothetical. A one percent increase, which is the second line, would generate an addition, would a one percent increase would generate. An additional thirty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars per year. It would have a per account annual impact. Of fifty-five cents per month. So that just to put that into a bit of context, the reason I went with nineteen point four-two percent. Was just to share with the committee. What the averages. So again, the nineteen point four-two percent is the average. The franchise average that would increase if the count of it were to increase to the average would be six hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. You do see that annual per account impact. Rising from ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents to a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Now, again, comparatively, thirty-five percent. You would see the percent, the dollars collected on behalf of the town in one million two hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And you see a substantial annual impact of two hundred and thirty-one dollars, twenty-three cents up from the current. Ninety-six dollars, forty-five cents. Similarly, a one percent decrease would project a reduction of thirty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. And that is again to show what the one percent would do in conjunction. So again, administratively, the current franchise fee for gas is fourteen point six percent. If it were desirable, the committee can provide a consensus recommendation to bring this forward to the next meeting of council. There is a timeliness to this where we would have to forward a letter on to. On to Adco that they would coordinate with the Alberta Utilities Commission for advertising. If we were to see either an increase or decrease to the gas franchise fee chart in the town of. Sir, thank you very much. And that is my report.
Thanks. That I'd like to turn it over to the next person in line, the chair.
I think that come to me.
Can I, sorry. I was just looking at your procedure procedure by that and when it says when the deputy mayor mayor wants to make a motion, the mayor shall take the chair. Section ten going.
Counselor Taylor. For yours.
Right, thanks. Okay. So. I don't see a concern with the electrical fee, but I do see concern with the gas fee. And my concern would have to go back to two thousand ten to understand my concern. These fees and utility bills in two thousand ten generated five hundred thousand dollars per year and revenue for both the gas and the electrical franchise fees. And this coming year, the amount will be about one point eight-two percent, the one point eight-two million dollars with those those fees together. So it's gone in twelve years from five hundred thousand to one point eight-two million. That works out over a three hundred percent increase in twelve years or about whatever that is twenty, twenty-five percent increase per year. I think that's what the number works out to. And I think it's because these fees are buried in the cost of our utility bill with less transparency on them. That successive councils have opted for far in excess increases to what we would do with the regular property taxes. Springboard property taxes wouldn't be increasing by that much. The natural gas bill, we're projecting to bring in eighteen point two. Those are the town town managers' calculations, not mine, extra crash without some sort of intervention. We're going to be doing what successive councils have done and once again, be part of the reason why taxpayers cringe when they look at their electrical or gas bill and distribution for the carrying charges. Because we're no way we'd be doing an eighteen point one percent or eighteen point two percent increase with the property taxes. These fees are taxes. Are not as fair or open or transparent as. They are with property taxes. And they're not discussed in a way that everybody can see them like with property taxes. Accordingly, I'd like to move. The council directs administration to reduce the natural gas rider fee such that the fee has a neutral revenue impact in two thousand twenty-three. So what? I don't know what that would be, but with what Paul said. CEO said that would be about a two percent reduction to the fourteen point six would bring it down to. So we're we're not collecting eighteen point six percent on this next year, or it's going to be a revenue revenue neutral. And if we want to. Get money from the taxpayers, let's get it through the the property taxes, which is a. One more widely discussed and easily understood place to get it.
Can you please repeat your motion?
Surely town for direct administration to reduce to reduce the natural gas rider fee. Such that this fee has a. Neutral revenue impact in two thousand twenty-three.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That council direct administration to reduce the natural gas rider fee. Such that this fee has a neutral revenue impact in two thousand twenty-three.
For such that this, sorry.
Such that this he has a neutral revenue impact in two thousand twenty-three. Two ideas that we collected. Thanks. To that, that's that we collect four hundred and thirty-four thousand last year. And we would collect about the same amount this year. So that we don't have this thing going up by eighteen point two percent and being part of the longstanding problem that's made this thing go up from five hundred thousand to one point eight million in twelve years. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Taylor. I see O'Hamlin.
Just if I could, if if like administratively, if if. If the member would consider instead of gas rider, we call it gas franchise fee. So it is correctly the gas franchise fee is the consideration that would be brought back by administration.
That would be great. Thank you.
Before I go to council, moving to the council, my question for administration is the twenty twenty-one numbers. Four hundred and thirty-four thousand that we collect, do we have a projection on twenty twenty-two? Because I could support a change. I'd like for us to select a rate. In order to just. Deal with the rate because a lot of these twenty twenty-three are projections. So if we select a rate, we may be off a bit. Any any math on what the twenty twenty-two number is?
Sir, I do apologize to the members. Electrically for the electrical franchise fee, we have those numbers from Fortis. Unfortunately, Adco doesn't have those numbers and I was not able to work with my staff here just this morning and today. To try and confirm those for twenty twenty-two this year. We know it will be up and if I can just very. Forgive me, I know I wasn't asked this, but as a commodity that is going through the roof right now, gas is projected to be more expensive in twenty twenty-three than it's ever been. Just a reminder to council or to the committee members, excuse me, that it's a percentage charged on a commodity and that commodity is much more expensive. I do understand the request of member Taylor and could certainly bring that back through the use of the calculator for the consideration of of council at a bigger date.
Thank you for that, I see O'Hamlin. With that, the way the the motions phrase, I wouldn't support it. I I I would entertain. A lower rate of thirteen point six or slightly below that because I would assume that the increase from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Would be somewhere between four hundred and thirty-four thousand and four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, which is projected for twenty twenty-three. So without knowing twenty twenty-two. Yeah, I I I would want to pick a percentage that falls in between those two and then let the numbers go based on the usage that are just projections for twenty twenty-three. Counselor McGee.
Actually, I must be approaching it a little differently. I'm I'm actually in favor of that because of Counselor Taylor's. Direction because I. What I heard from our C A O is that we can we can project that before regular council meeting. And if we actually have a number that is well defined, such as four hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-nine oh seven, then we know exactly what we could budget for moving forward. I honestly, I feel personally, it's a little bit of splitting hairs, but I'm willing to support what's on the floor right now.
Counselor McGee, administration, just for clarification purposes. Counselor McGee alluded to that we'll we'll be able to have a number by regular for the twenty twenty-two.
Sir, through through to the members of the committee, I I believe with an additional couple of days, I could work with finance to confirm. It would be us projecting to year end as well, but we'd be able to take a look at the revenues received from Adco on this. Provide our estimate to year end twenty twenty-two and could I understand the intent of the motion? And so again, working with the Adco calculator, I could bring a couple of different percentages to council to take a look at. Again, based on Adco's projections for twenty twenty-three and council could then direct what we wish. I'll make sure to have the actual make sure to have the. Calculator with me at the next meeting.
Thank you for that, I see.
Never mind, I'm not.
Yeah, Counselor Haas.
Yeah, well, that's I appreciate that those sentiments because as is, I wouldn't be able to support it. I'm not sure if I can support it in regular, but I would. That information would be helpful. I mean, my only concern too is, and I guess this is for clarification to Counselor Taylor. When you use that one point eight million, I believe that was the number roughly, are you combining Adco with? Fortis, is that is the combination that we do? Okay. I mean, I I guess I I have no problem taking a look at it and seeing. I'm not sure if I want to reduce it first currently. I don't see this as a hidden tax. We talk about it every year. The community sees it. We've seen Fortis. We've had this conversation. In numerous times every year I've been on council, so I don't see it as hidden. People know it's there. It is the cost of doing business in our community. So. I'm still on the fence of of support this. You know, I guess the only way to see those numbers and move it forward is into regular. So to do that, I I I. I will. Possibly support this at this this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, the the motion is without reference to a year as well. So I hope that gives you some comfort, but I I like what. The town manager said, sounds like he's going to bring us back comparison to two thousand twenty-two and two thousand maybe twenty-one. And we can look at that then. But I would draw your attention to the information that. That. That the town manager gave us in the email when we asked for follow-up information. And that shows that the amount of money we'd be collecting from this natural gas fee has been in the very, very low four hundred thousand range for quite a while. You know, four hundred, this doesn't include taxes or GST. So you got to add maybe twenty, thirty thousand four oh three. Two thousand twenty-four oh seven, two thousand nineteen, four, four, fourteen. Two thousand eighteen, three, three eighty-four. And then in two thousand twenty, it shoots up like an X set missile to five hundred whatever thousand dollars. So I think it's worth considering. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor McGee.
Yeah, just my my one final thought. I think it's important to recognize too that. We've seen some some very large increases in the cost of these utilities to our to our community members, especially in the last six to twelve months. And. And while I would agree that it's not a, you know, it's not a hidden tax, so to speak, I think it's one thing to understand is that we control it. And that we have some input over it. And for years, I've taken my digs at the university, pardon me, at the the province. For the education requisition that we as a town, we're required to to collect. How many times have we tried to pass a zero budget or a one percent or two percent, some low, low percent budget, if anything? Only to find ourselves defending the province because we're required to collect on their behalf. In a lot of ways, there's a comparison here. Is that I would be, I feel for myself. If if I said it wasn't okay for the province to do, but then sort of turned turned the other shoe and said, well. But the the energy companies can collect on our behalf. I don't know if I feel comfortable with that. And this is an area where I've changed my opinion. And early on in my career as a counselor, I fully supported this. And then after talking to a number of our citizens, I felt that this is, it's better for us to collect our own money over time. Certainly, we can't change it quickly. But we can move it into a more cost neutral position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. For myself, if we can get the data for twenty twenty-two, I'll make that decision next week. I share some of the concerns with Counselor Haas, but. I'm open to. Keeping the same revenue total from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Let's see that data and honestly, having just over fifty percent of council, that conversation may change next week anyway. So. Let's get that info and decide as a council next week. I'd be fine with that. Counsel, anything further before I call this the question? Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's not as hidden as it used to be because two thousand thirteen. This didn't even show up on your utility bill as the Hinton municipal franchise fee. So at least now it shows up as the Hinton municipal franchise fee, never used to like nine years ago. So it's not as hidden as it used to be. So I'll give you that.
So you, Counselor Taylor, counsel with that, I think that's a dollar. Anything further before the call this to question? Seeing then, seeing none of called question that council direct administration to produce natural gas franchise fee such. That this fee has a neutral revenue impact in twenty twenty-three. Administration, is that proper wording? Counselor. To is this a? The intent is to bring this to the regular kind of meeting of council? Any comments before I call this the question?
Sir, it would be next Tuesday will be my final meeting. It would be my preference to try and get this information and back to you on this and possibly the next item for next Tuesday. The only thing if I could speak very very briefly to it, if if we could say approximately. Revenue neutral. I I'm not going to be able to guarantee it's revenue neutral, but I'm going to be able to approximate it.
I guess what I was getting to, and I think Counsel speaking to it, this is just telling administration to reduce it and we just want to. Bring that for. uh bring that for decision to the next regular meeting. Um does wording need to be changed or is that the uh is that understood that this is not a final decision until it comes to regular?
Sir, that's understood.
So any recommendation from administration just to remain the same? The way it's worded?
I'm comfortable with the wording and and it would be my intent to bring it to back to next Tuesday's meeting of council.
Counselor Magoon.
I'm happy to change it too.
If if I may, while I respect the town manager's response, my only concern is that we're in a committee of the whole meeting and it says that council direct administration. So in the, that's that's my only concern is that uh in the past, we've used language around committee recommend administration bring back for decisions, some something to that.
Thank you. Uh so if we could put that committee recommend administration to reduce and if Counselor Taylor would be okay with that change? And then it provides the same intent for it to come to regular for decision. Administration, any issues with the wording change?
Um if if we need something indicating and return to uh council.
And so if we could add uh with Counselor Taylor's uh permission uh and return to a regular meeting of council for decision?
If if I could, sorry, sir, if I could. Given the timing around the A U C notification, I would suggest that it read the October uh eighteen twenty of council.
Counselor Taylor, would you be okay with those uh changes?
That's perfect.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Thank you, Counselor Magoon and.
Do you want to make one about the um such that the fee is uh almost or close to revenue control or is it okay with?
Okay, council, uh if you can have one more look before I call this the question. Thank you for making this a stronger been seeing none, I'll call the question like committee recommend administration to reduce natural gas franchise fee such that this fee has a neutral revenue impact in twenty twenty three and return to the October eighteen twenty twenty two regular meeting of council. Council, all those in favor? That's fast unanimously.
I can take it back if you like.
Thank you.
With that, uh thank you for that. Can we move on to the next topic? Which is five three, the Fortis Alberta franchise fee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Through you to the members of the committee on page twenty seven of your agenda package. Uh very similar item, in fact, so much so that you may think I cut and paste it. I do apologize. And as I said, uh so in the bottom, uh number five in my summary, sixteen communities are currently charging the maximum fee, which correctly is twenty percent. I apologize, it is not thirty five percent. The A U E C, for whatever reason, I couldn't distinguish differentiates between a maximum fee for gas and a maximum fee for electric. So the electric maximum fee that can be charged is twenty percent. So similar language to what we had last year, we are collecting because the cost associated with the electrical body is higher. We are collecting uh more with this at one million three hundred twenty one thousand twenty two and franchise fees. Now, this is estimated to year end twenty twenty two. So Fortis gives us a little more information than I was able to secure with with Atco and that is on a franchise fee of eleven point seven three percent. Now coming as I did last time to the summary, uh there are one hundred and sixty seven customers that is municipalities in franchise fee agreement with Fortis Alberta Electric. The average franchise fee collected is nine point zero four percent. So we're actually two point six nine percent above the average that is seen in the current franchise fees charged. Um as I mentioned, twenty percent is the maximum, sixteen communities, that is nine point five eight percent of those in franchise agreements with Fortis are charging the maximum fee and twenty eight or twenty nine communities, that is essentially seventeen to seventeen and a half percent are currently not charging a fee. Just to explain why the two is one of the communities is identified as zero, but there's a note indicated pending. So I don't know the status of that. It was, there was no further details. It's Stratcona. So my sense is they're probably before the A U C right now looking to increase it from zero. So if you include the one that is pending, there's twenty nine communities exclusive excluded. There is eighteen. Uh similarly, there's franchise fee information available. Um so if the in table one on the following page, if the town of Hinton maintains the current eleven point seven three percent franchise fee for electrical, um we would see a collection in twenty twenty three of one point three million six hundred thirty four thousand. Uh that is uh a reduced collection down from one million three hundred twenty one thousand and one million three hundred twenty one thousand twenty two dollars. Um oddly enough, a monthly impact uh increase up two point eight percent from eighty three point five two. Uh may seem odd, uh did speak to a colleague of mine at Fortis and she indicated off the record that uh utility companies get you coming and going. So there's additional fees outside of the franchise fee that are added to the twenty twenty three. Um so although the franchise fee sees a reduction, uh the overall bills will go up, but it's going up due to other payments to Fortis and not to the town of Hinton, if that makes sense. Um similarly, I chose to decrease it in the second row since we were above or are currently above the average, a one percent uh decrease, excuse or excuse me, one percent increase translates to eight hundred and ten thousand eight hundred eighty one dollars in additional revenues. And that would be a monthly residential increase of seventy seven cents again on average. Uh a ten point seven three percent franchise fee, sorry, that would be the one percent decrease has a corresponding similar reduction of one hundred and ten thousand eight hundred eighty one dollars and a zero point seven six percent decrease uh monthly to account holders. Nine point zero four percent which is down two point four percent from our current is a would see a reduction to one million and two thousand three hundred sixty four dollars, this again being the current average. The maximum, if if hypothetically the town were to consider twenty percent, we would see the uh franchise fee for electric increase to two point two billion, one, sorry, two hundred two million two hundred seventeen thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars or a seven point four percent monthly increase to uh property owners. With that, sir, I'm happy to answer any questions on this and seek any consensus or direction.
Any questions or comments? I have a question. Another way of thinking about this is this is the fee that you are charged so that the utility company can use that section of property that you already own that's in front of your house.
Sir, if I could uh through you to the members of the committee, I I would I would answer partly. Um it also is the balance of public lands throughout the town of Hinton that transports and brings electrical service into the town and into all of our communities residential this areas of businesses. So it's not just that portion on on their property. The franchise fee is actually for all the access and lands throughout the town of Hinton as well.
Thanks. Um any more comments or questions on that?
Just one.
Go ahead, please.
Uh thank you. Uh to to our uh C A O, the recommended action indicates uh committee direct administration to bring the report from yada, 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 as found on page twenty seven. Would the intention be to uh if council provided the recommended action to administration, would be the intention be on October eighteenth just to to bring the table one options to council to to essentially, you know, pick one at the will of council is we were a little more specific with the last direction. So.
Yeah, thank you. Uh sir, through you to member Magoon to the members of the committee. Actually, if I had the opportunity to redo this, I'd probably go with my option two, which would be committee accept this item for information and takes no further action on this matter in two thousand twenty two. And the reason my recommendation would be that is essentially similar to our discussion with the last item. It's essentially budget neutral at this time. And if we take no action, there's no change contemplated or pursued through the A U C to change the electrical franchise fee.
If I may then, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
No, no, I I saw a hand, so that's.
No, you go.
Um then if I may, I'd like to uh provide option number two as a a motion for uh committee, please, that committee accept this item for information and takes no further action on this matter in twenty twenty two. Uh and then just for myself, just simply, uh this is one that's seen a little bit different variance uh than the previous item. And it's it's one that has a lot of impact, not only on our users per month, uh but also on the overall revenue collected for the municipality. And so I I hesitate uh playing around with that foreign to like too too much at this time at all. And so I would rather see it uh continue as is. Thank you.
Counselor Hoss. Yeah, no, I was gonna make the same motion. I appreciate the clarification on that because I I see the same is to leave it the way it is uh for this year and see what next year is, but it is, there is a different impact. The fact that we haven't looked at the previous one in a while, so I'm I'm in favor of this.
I have a couple of question to the last question. That's that if we accept this information, then next week, um we don't have to do anything and then it automatically gets renewed at the current rate.
Sir, that is correct. Thank you.
Okay, uh any more comments or questions on that? With that, um I'd like to recall the question that we accept this item for information. It takes and takes no further action on this matter into those twenty two. Not great English, but I'm okay with it. Was that a school teacher that? Uh all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okie dokie. Can we move on to uh information item uh six point one Yellowhead County Cost Share Agreement?
So, sorry, um thank you, sir. And with that, on page thirty three of uh the data package, I will turn this over to our corporate services director and Mr. Porbo will take us through uh our uh share agreement F C S S recreation with Yellowhead County.
Thank you. Members of committee, if you recall, in August, we received the request from Yellowhead County to release the um cost share budget numbers ahead of when we had our budgets prepared. And we indicated to council and committee at the time that we were uncomfortable doing that. Administration gave the budget holders of the area areas affected under the cost share agreements, the latitude to prepare their budgets in anticipation of the twenty twenty three budget deliberations that we will be proceeding with uh in the month of November. What we have prepared for and with uh raised now being aware of them is the attachments is the cost share calculations that will we will be forwarding to Yellowhead County to meet our contractual obligation of providing these numbers by October fifteenth annually. Council will have uh full latitude of understanding what all of these numbers are through the budget process, the presentations from the department holders, supported by the director of those departments to answer any questions to council and committee at the times of what the numbers are comprised of.
Any comments or questions? Thank you. Oh, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask it. Maybe it will be during the budget process, but and maybe you may or not, you may know, maybe not. But one of the things that I that I wonder about as I'm looking at this, um is our our tax uh volunteer tax program. And I'm curious as to how many of the county residents do we um provide that service to? Because I'm only asking that question because I mean, that seems like a small amount for S C S S and I know that other counties and towns, um they don't take people from outside of the area. So I'm just curious, is is that program providing services to the the members of the or to the county residents and in potentially, and and this is a number, I'm sure you don't put the percentage if they do. Um because that's that's a that's a big program. There's a lot of work behind that and things like that. So I'm just wondering, because I don't see that on here as a a program. I see, I don't know what it would fall under, whether it's services for independence uh or I'm not sure, but.
Do the chair to all members of committee, uh under the S C S S funding agreement, we have strong restrictions and limitations as to what we can and can't include under the grant funded programming and the relationship that has to happen between the two parties. But we will definitely make note of that question and can certainly respond to that and ensure we have those answers during the budget process if you give us that latitude.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm I'm fine with that. I just I'm just curious because I mean, like I said, I I'm just, that's a small number and it's a big program and and it's just one of many that potentially. So I don't know uh how that plays out into the budget. So that'd be, yeah.
Please go ahead.
You chair through to counselor. I think I can add a few details to that. So the volunteer, the tax program is done is run is sort of provided by volunteers. So there is no cost in that respect. Um there is obviously uh some of our internal capacity to land this program and track it. Undoubtedly, there are county residents of some percent and it is tracked uh at S C S S. We can get that sent to you to get you an idea of that to your program.
Thank you.
Uh we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that committee accepts the report for information.
Any comments or questions on that? Hey. I'll wait for that so I can up the board on it. Well, Jen's got to take it first. Okay, um that that be the case, uh we're gonna, we're gonna uh achieve consensus on the committee accepts the report for information. Uh all in favor? All opposed? Uh the motion carries. I do have a question though. Um what's the what's the rationale for the difference in the contribution uh agreements between the two organizations? One's five point eight one one seven point seven five from the county. Like what's what's that goes up? Why is it different? I thought it was population based, but it doesn't look like it.
Through the chair and members of committee, my apologies. I did not bring the agreements with me today. They were signed in, I think, just twenty thirteen and they run until December thirty first twenty twenty nine, but we'll ensure that those details are available during budget.
Okay, thank you very much. And uh okay, so we're finished with that topic and I'd just like to note that uh five oh six, Council Race joined the meeting. Thank you for coming. Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Very shiny piece. It's always welcome. That will move on to reporting. Council reports, boards and committees to start with the mayor.
Nothing, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Counselor Magoon.
Uh congratulations to our new um staff sergeant. I believe she started duty today. So thanks a lot.
Counselor Hoss.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Race.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Uh Counselor Taylor. I opened the pickleball court last week and that was exciting. I got to actually play, so I responded. Nice to have that facility. The residents uh will be able to either enjoy watching people or actually playing themselves. And so that's great to have that for that facility.
Can we move on to the chief administrative officer report?
Thank you, sir. I do uh one report, uh just a reminder and uh will certainly work with the members of the committee, the members of council as needed, if necessary, but any council O B Cs for the twenty twenty three budget were due last week. Um so i- if you have any of those lingering and and need to get those onto us, please do so ASAP. O B C is ASAP, acronyms, bureaucrats. Um Secondly, uh capital projects, capital project plans, C P V script are due tomorrow. And so if any, and so I I do have from two members uh what you have forwarded to me. If anybody else is working on those, please get those into us as soon as possible. Uh I would like to also just state that I had a uh had a team's meeting with the T S I this morning and so for a status. And so for a status report, have, will indicate that the uh, the final report of the service level review will be brought to council. For the uh, October twenty eighth meeting. They'll have it, uh, then, they apologize, they were hoping to have it uh, for next Tuesday, but they aren't going to do it.
Any uh, questions or comments for the town manager? Well. Okay, thank you very, oh, yes, please.
Oh, just motion to uh, go into closed session?
Well, I was gonna give us a, that's, uh, we could do that.
Like with a reset.
With a reset, it's perfect, okay, all all those in favor? Let's take that short recess, thank you.
Thank you.